Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners and Work Session, second one here for Wednesday, June 16, 2021. It is 2:05 PM. My name is Tim Mancio, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards. To my right is Commissioner Karen Mahia. We have our County Manager Romero Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, our Director of Public Works Jennifer Walker, and Tim Wilson and Karen Bies from our Public Works Leadership Team. The topic today is water and sewer utility rate adjustments. We have an hour scheduled, and we have live stream access for the public through our YouTube channel, as well as a few seats in the boardroom that you can attend in person. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the County Manager.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is in preparation to the biennial budget 2022-2023. And Esteban is going to provide you with that perspective and a proposal for the 2022 rate adjustments for the utilities the county manages.
With that, I think Tim's going to lead right into it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager, Public Works. Similar to this morning, I think that we probably overscheduled your time, and we're hoping that we can wrap this up in a little shorter time period. So we're here today to talk to you about proposed rate increases for the water and sewer utilities for 2022. We've had several opportunities to speak with you earlier this spring about initiatives that we're working on with the utilities to set them up for success now and in the future. Some of those items include code updates and construction development standard updates, a cost of service or a rate study that we are kicking off, and we expect to be concluded at some point during '22, 2022. That would inform our rate structure going forward into the future. But in the short term, it's very obvious to us that costs continue to escalate, and our ability to keep up with those costs are a concern. So Karen and our team of smart people have put together some information regarding a proposal for 2022, a rate adjustment. I would say that these have been shared with both the Boston Harbor and Tamashan Utility Advisory Committees, similar presentations, to make them aware of the need for the rate increase. And with that, I would turn it over to Karen.
Okay, are you running the slideshow?
I am.
Okay, so just the bottom line upfront is the water and sewer utilities is proposing a 3% rate increase for 2022 only, based on operational cost increase and the need to invest in future infrastructure needs. Just as a reminder, Thurston County has seven separate utilities: Boston Harbor Water and Sewer, Tamashan Water, Tamashan Beverly Beach Sewer, Grand Mound Water and Sewer, and Olympic View Sewer. And those serve approximately 730 residential and 80 commercial customers. And just also a reminder, we manage over 11 separate utility funds with our utilities program. The graph that Tim has brought up here provides three years of historical maintenance operations expenses, 2018 through 2020, and then the 2021 budgeted expense for the utilities that are combined. So between 2018 and '20, our maintenance and operations costs increased 7.7%. And for 2021, budgeted expenditures reflect a 16.6% increase over the prior year, though we anticipate the actual expenditure level will be less due to budget savings, and we expect that to be more in the 3.5% range. So estimating 2018 to 2021, 2021, we're estimating about 11.2% or higher cost increase for that time period. Okay, so this is the utilities' monthly base rates. I know this is a busy slide. This is a graph by utility of their rates. So Tamashan is on the left, followed by Boston Harbor, Grand Mound, and Olympic View Sewer. For that same period we just talked about, 2018 through 2021, rate increases for all the utilities, with the exception of Boston Harbor, were at 10.3%. So not keeping pace, therefore, with the cost of our inflation and MNO costs, which were estimated to be 11.2% for that same period. Boston Harbor's rates did increase 17.9% during that period, and that's because when we developed the 1920 budget, we recognized that the rates for water were not covering their MNO costs. They were eating into fund balance and being subsidized by sewer. So more significant cost increases were implemented at that time for Boston Harbor, and that was with the support of the Boston Harbor Advisory Committee at that time. Just a note, we did not request a rate increase for 2021 because of COVID-related financial considerations. And then, this isn't the purpose of the slide, but just as the stacked bar components of each rate, so the bottom portion, the blue, is the sewer rate, followed by the water base rate in orange. And on top, the smallest portion, is the water consumption rate. Not the purpose of the presentation, but just the board can see the wide variance in the rates between all of the utilities. And that's a key factor that will be evaluated as a part of our utilities' cost of services study, which is in process.
Real quick, Karen, so just so I understand, over this time period, costs rise 11.2%, rates have risen 10.3%.
Right.
Just illustrating that there's a cap.
Can I do it real quick, sir? Just waiting until it's all done, but we got time. Why is it, okay, she said because of COVID, you did not do an increase. But it's my understanding that CARES money allowed for increase funding to go towards sewer and water.
No, you, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I believe that you are confusing the CRF money from last year with the new recovery fund money this year. This year's recovery fund money, water and sewer infrastructure costs are allowable.
Yes.
But last year, we could not put money just simply towards our water and sewer systems.
Okay, no, and that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Right.
So why can't we help do the sewer system with CARES money and water system?
We...
Relief money.
With relief money.
It's a...
Why not?
I'm working with Jennifer to bring a proposal to the board, because the board has not made that decision yet.
Well, no, but we've never had it in front of us. We've never even talked about it yet.
But it's for the, what's permissible under the Recovery Act is for infrastructure. What we're talking about here is maintenance and operation costs.
None of this goes to...
And we will, I do have some slides that talk about infrastructure later, so I think that's a perfect question.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to offset anything that the, if we intentionally held back because of COVID, and we could legally expend funds to upgrade their infrastructure, if you will. I think it's a pretty broad base of what could be called what? Look at what Congress is claiming is infrastructure right now. You know, if you look at the proposals Congress is doing, I mean, everything in the world is infrastructure. You know, schools, educate kids, because that's going to help us build bridges in 40 years. So anyway, I don't, I wonder if maybe we shouldn't look at that and actually increase the amount of revenue into the system to fix systems. We don't have to go to the citizens, but let's bring it up to speed, if we can, so we've got a good operating system instead of something with a shoestring.
Commissioner, I'm working with Jennifer to bring a proposal to the board.
But I think where he's going is that how can we decide if rates should be increased? If we're going to...
We'll get there. I promise we'll get there in the...
Rates, this is...
Okay, let her finish.
I promise we'll get there in this slide.
This is part of the budget process, so you are not implementing a pool of rates right now.
Let's go.
We'll talk about the infrastructure, the reserves in a minute, where exactly the funding that you're talking about will be part of that discussion. So, okay, so what do we know about 2022 budget development? So we know that from April 20 to April 21, the CPIU increased 3.4%. I believe we have a wage increase of 2.5% for contractual commitments. And I'm sure Robin, if you have something to add, let me know. We're using a 5% estimate for medical benefit costs. We typically use a 2.5% increase for indirects. Those could be potentially higher, depending on the fund. And we did have a decrease in revenue because of COVID and the governor's proclamation, so we did not bring in revenue from shut offs and interest and penalties. That was about 49, down 49% in 2020. And we expect that trend to continue for 2021 under the continuing proclamation. So based on these factors, for the MNO, we're proposing a 3% rate increase. We are not proposing a rate increase for 2023 at this time, and that is because we are in the process of conducting our cost of services study, and we expect that to help inform rates and organizational structure moving forward. Okay, next slide.
So lots of revenue is an allowable cost.
In the aggregate, we have not been able to get clarification from the federal government yet. We have a calculation tool that was developed by the GFOA, but it is clearly in the aggregate, and we are seeking clarification on that, and utilities are excluded. So this, you know, counting on this for lost revenue is not a deal with this.
Stretch.
Stretch. It's more than a stretch.
If we can encourage those delinquent accounts, owners, to reach out to the community action council.
So we have, we have had an aggressive advocacy and effort to reach all of our delinquent utility customers for those, for both of the funding. So that's absolutely the case. This is actually late fees and interest and penalties that we are not charging customers.
Oh, is the actions that we have taken...
Correct, that we've suspended based on the governor's requirements, proclamations. But yes, our customers were absolutely, we've had a very, very aggressive campaign to help them recognize that there's funding available.
But we're not going to make any checks out to customers. We're going to always make them out to the end.
Oh, to the provider.
Yeah, the provider.
Yeah.
So why can't we talk to the provider and tell them to go shut the water off until they put in their notice of help?
Where are the providers?
Let's go shut the water off and tell them to get it here.
We cannot, we cannot legally shut waters.
Turn it down to a dribble or something. You do something. Let's make use of this system we've got in place.
So just for the benefit of the public, we're not trying to negate the governor's order?
I am. I'm trying to figure out a way around it. I make no bones about it. He's just another bureaucrat.
That would be just one law.
And if we can figure out ways to get around these bureaucratic roadblocks for citizens, I think it's beneficial to the citizen.
Okay.
Okay, next slide. So, yeah, this is, we're good, we're good.
I got a lot somewhere.
So on this slide, this is a demonstration. These are, again, high-level, early-budget estimates. We're just now launching into budget development, but this is what was used for the analysis of the proposed 3% increase. So what you see there is your estimated revenue with a 3% increase, and that's the total sewer estimated revenue or total water estimated revenue, the estimated expenditures on the line right under that, and then the revenue over/under expenses. So, you know, what you'll see is for the, here you go, here's seven of our 11 funds, you'll see that the rates are intended to support maintenance and operations costs. But for example, with Tamashan, the underwater Tamashan, without a 3% increase, it would not cover the MNO costs for the budget at this level. So in that case, we would be dipping into fund balance to subsidize or pay for the MNO costs. Olympic View also looks a little uncomfortable from this slide. That is because, I mean, this is such a small step fund. Like, you've got $30,000 or $50,000 in estimated expenditures. So if we put in a $10,000 line item to cover a major repair or something, it has a pretty big impact on that fund. If we don't spend it, well, then that's $10,000 of savings, so that reduces that amount that, you know, that the expenditures exceed the revenue.
CARES money would fix that.
But we'll get there, I promise. In any case, that fund has been, over the last few years, spending over their, the revenue has not exceeded their expenses, so they've been spending down fund balance, which is not sustainable over time. So what happens to that excess money, the revenue over expenses? So that's what's going to fund the long-term infrastructure needs and leads into the conversation, Commissioner Edwards, that you were bringing up. So rate revenue that's over our expenditures is transferred into our reserve funds, and that's a good segue to our next slide. Okay, so these are the reserve funds. Olympic View, I'll just note, both are MNO, and the reserve is in the same fund. So this is the fund balance, the estimated fund balance for the time period '21 through '26. This is based on that 3% annual increase, actually, this is based on a 3% estimated increase all years 2022 through 2026.
Karen, talk a little bit about, when you say "reserve fund," what that means.
Reserve funds we use to pay for our future infrastructure costs or significant, major, like if we have meter replacements, something like that, that's a non-recurring type but of a large, significant expense. We try to keep the MNO funds fairly level, so we can do, you know, regular budgeting from year to year. So as you can see, what happens out over this time period is those are some pretty, those are some pretty negative balances over time, right? The numbers in parentheses we're showing, with the exception of just a couple out there.
Because you're assuming that certain projects are going to get...
Because we're assuming...
Aging infrastructure.
Yeah, because of our aging infrastructure, exactly.
And we have planned projects on this, yeah.
And if you extend this out even further, it continues this trend.
Well, I mean, you can just see that by these numbers. They're so small.
Yes.
At least a lot, they always say that 80% of their budget is capital stuff.
Exactly, right.
And so if you're only covering 20% of your budget with rates, how are you going to cover 80%?
Exactly.
With this little overage.
Yeah.
And that's assuming we are crazy. So I'm curious how you manage this.
Well, so what I will say, because I don't want to say the sky is falling, the sky is falling in the short term, right? So this is based on the '21 through '26 Capital Improvement Program. We are in the process right now of updating that, so we will have a revised capital program. I want to point out, Boston Harbor and Tamashan would both have negative fund balances in '21 and '22, had the board not approved REIT funding, REIT II funding for projects that have been approved, Boston Harbor Generator and the Tamashan Water Treatment Process Assessment and Upgrade. And there's REIT money programmed in throughout this as well, so we've got about $995,000 programmed, not board-approved, but programmed in over this time period for Boston Harbor, and about $560,000 for Tamashan.
But you figure if we don't have the money, then we don't do the projects. And what we have is just the delayed, the deferring those improvements that need to happen. As you defer those capital improvements that need to happen, your maintenance and operation costs increase, because you have more things that are breaking down. You've got to put more labor hours into keeping that system.
Robin, you said we couldn't use me, CARES money for maintenance and operation, right?
That's correct, but...
So fix all that stuff well ahead of time, and then you don't have to work on it.
So this...
That is a part of the plan.
Okay.
So this is the slide where, you know, we talk about the fact that some of the American Recovery Act funding dollars, for example, could be used to help support the infrastructure needs. As Jennifer mentioned, we delay them, but sometimes we can't. Some of these projects, we can't delay because of, you know, major system failures or regulatory requirements. And, you know, we as a county have a responsibility for making sure that this infrastructure stays in working order to provide water and sewer essential services. So, you know, the bottom line is, our utilities aren't adequately funded. And so, you know, we do need to look at all of our options to pay for some of these infrastructure needs. And so, you know, I mean, it is an exciting conversation. I think from our standpoint at Public Works that there might be some funding. I mean, what I would hope is maybe we could get it to a level playing field, get some of that major infrastructure work done, and then that would really put us in a good position to talk about the rate structure through the cost of services study and, you know, what that might look like going forward organizationally, so.
Do you have, I mean, from this chart, we can't tell what projects are assumed to be funded. So like, is it $5 million worth of stuff that we'd like to do in the next five years? Or is it $1 million worth of stuff? Or is it $50 million worth of stuff?
It's, well, I'm going to let Tim take a guess at that. I mean, again, we're going through that capital improvement program development process right now.
Yeah, so there are some major needs within Grand Mound especially. There are, you know, water treatment expansion and water rights issues and some big-ticket items. What we've done in the short term, we pulled those off the CIP, and we're going to, we need to evaluate that and do a study to kind of feed into that. But I would expect in the Grand Mound area, probably the $3 to $5 million range. But again, we pulled those out, and we don't have those numbers as of yet.
It gives me a sense.
Well, and Tamashan and Boston Harbor are the ones that, you know, the issues we have there.
Those are the ones we need the most.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Because that rated the system, then alleviates transferring to the capital, so you have more operation costs.
Also, Grand Mound is growing.
Right.
So that's the only one that we're getting.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if the board approves the American Rescue Plan, I think the benefits of that is obviously is very clear on water and sewer, infrastructure and the operations. And the last that I've heard is, you know, those funds need to be obligated by December 2024 and spent by 2026.
That's correct.
So that gives you a perspective in terms of perhaps proposals, Director, as to how we can bring this to the board.
And then, of course, the other thing you...
Don't get super shocked when I...
The other thing you don't see in this, obviously, is we all know construction costs are skyrocketing down too, and that's not reflected in these totals. So take that and add 30% off on top of it, I'm not sure, or something like that.
By chain issues.
The magnitude's significant, right? That's the bottom line. Okay, next slide, for me, Tim, please. This is just showing the benefit, from our perspective, of regular incremental cost or rate increases. Putting aside that notwithstanding what we just talked about on the other slide, this shows what a 3% annual increase would be over that same time period compared to either a irregular or a no rate increase. And so, you know, that's a $1.5 million swing, based on the current capital improvement program that we base this analysis on by the time you get out to 2026. So again, just sort of the, I think we all recognize that in our own. We all do better when you have regular increases potential. Nobody likes an increase, I get that, but regular increases in your rates as opposed to one huge, big jump in one year, it's hard to budget and manage for. So I know the big question always is, next slide, what is this going to cost me out of my pocket? And that's what the next slide shows. So this is for the different utilities, what the monthly rate increase can be. So you can see it ranges from Olympic Sewer, $3 a month, to the, up to Tamashan, $7 a month, so in between there. So, you know, again, recognizing that nobody's happy to pay more in general. We do have to pay for the services that are provided and figure out how to finance our operations. So, you know, I think that in general, this is not a horrible cost increase, moderate-cost increase. So just the next step, summary and next step. So as Tim mentioned, this presentation or a similar presentation was made to the Boston Harbor and Tamashan Utility Advisory Committees. We received feedback that they, again, nobody wants to vote for increase, but they seemed reasonable, and they agreed with the incremental approach, the gradual approach to rate increases. And so, you know, our summary or ask today is to move forward with a 3% rate increase for 2022 only in our budget process and move forward with public outreach and a public hearing in conjunction or alignment with our board process as well. And that public outreach would include bill inserts, quarterly newsletters, setting up a website for our residents, and the public hearing and continued discussions with the Utility Advisory Committee.
Other questions?
Are we there yet? We've been there. Okay. Keep going.
So I...
Ready?
Karen, I need to go.
Can I just ask a question real quick? Tim, you said that you did this presentation already to some community members that would be affected by the rate increase. What were the questions, comments during that presentation?
So you're right. We meet regularly with the advisory committees, the utility advisory committees for both Tamashan and Boston Harbor, trying to recall what their specific questions were, because a similar presentation was given to them, just, you know, showing that the cost's running away, the REIT funding that the commissioners have provided in the past. And I don't recall any specific questions.
So understanding maintenance operations, there wasn't a lot of discussion there. I mean, I think honestly, when you turn the slide and look at the infrastructure, I think they're nervous, right? I think they're worried. They're very appreciative of the REIT funding that the board had already authorized for those projects, but, you know, I think they're looking at that and saying, how in the world are we going to fund these? And even from Tamashan, one of the questions was, you know, how can we communicate with the board, you know, our support, for example, of having some of the funding going to some of those infrastructure needs? So, I mean, I think that's really their concern as well, yeah. But, you know, supportive, I would say, generally supportive.
Yeah, my second question, I guess, is more towards Romero and Robin. With the American Rescue Act money that's coming down, I know in the proposal, there was kind of like this set aside for the utilities. How much was that?
Two million. It was two million.
Two million?
That was four million. Yes, four million, which one...
You mean over the two?
No, so when Romero and I proposed earmarks, if you will, definitely not decision allocations, it included $5 million for infrastructure, that was $1 million for broadband, and $4 million for water and sewer.
From the first...
From the 28 million that we received this year. Part of the things that you should consider is the timing that Romero just mentioned. It takes time to do these types of projects. We have limited time to spend the money. So if you're going to make an allocation toward infrastructure, you ought to do it in this first tranche, or commit part of next year's now.
So and also another sense of urgency for the other side of the allocation. So I'm going to be bringing the American Rescue Plan next Tuesday morning for you to make what I call Phase One decision. And that is going to be totally limited to the recommendation that we provided for Thurston Strong and United Way. So I'm going to be bringing those, because they, those organizations need to have some sort of decision by the board where they'd like to implement those strategies to help they committed in the business. So and for the remainder of the $28 million, what I call Phase Two of the first allocation, I'm going to be working with Jennifer to give you a little more perspective as to the sewer and water, working with Jenica in terms of the broadband. And you heard that some of the allocation, perhaps for, when we're working, whether we are eligible to set aside for the lease of 3,000 Pacific. That may not be the case, so give us some time for the remainder to come back with a proposal. So on Tuesday, I will bring specific proposals. They will equate to just about $11.5 million, Thurston Strong, United Way, and Community Foundation along the way. So three elements, businesses, nonprofits, and social services. And that's really going to do what I believe is putting the intent of this American Rescue Plan money to help the community. And so I will ask the board, please don't, I'll give you some time to bring you the details of that, that that's just going to be a heads-up, that on Tuesday is going to be the Phase One of the first allocation.
I'd also say that we're continuing to get guidance on a very regular basis from U.S. Treasury on what is and is not eligible. We're learning about the revenue. We're getting updates on that all the time, the lost revenue. I doubt that the county will be able to claim any lost revenue, maybe for roads, but that's turning out to be a very limited resource. On the infrastructure, the water and sewer infrastructure... they had a webinar just today that I asked Jennifer to make sure her staff attended. But some of the early guidance is that the infrastructure must be directly related to COVID response, and how do you do that? So hopefully, there was information in the webinar about what qualifies and how it gets qualified, and I'll be chatting with whoever.
If there's a way to do it, we will find a way to do it.
Exactly, and, and that's the intent. We want to make use of this in ways that will have a lasting benefit to our citizens. We've got a unique opportunity here, so let's do that.
So in, in, when the American Rescue Plan passed and the intent was, you know, allocation to local governments, I think the, the expectation, not just for Thurston County, but for the nation, it was this much. The June eight, eight guidelines of the Treasury put us in this very small box. So that is why I think the, the decision that I will ask the board to take on Tuesday is just the Phase One, because I think that's clearly aligned to the intent of the American Rescue Plan. For the remainder, we're going to work on a larger proposal for you to consider.
We continue to, to try to determine what's eligible. And the NACO conference in early July that I'll be attending, a large part of their agenda for those few days is around this recovery fund money and ways we can spend it and things we need to watch out for. So I'm hoping to bring back a lot of information, July ninth through twelfth.
That's the train.
So.
DC, yeah.
Yeah, that's the DC.
Oh, no, don't remind me.
Yeah, you gotta go to Miami.
You had your hand up? Oh, yeah, I just got some things to go over here. Okay.
We're learning, we're learning all the time.
Let's set that aside because honestly, we did, I mean, I don't even going to put my brain to it when I don't know what is eligible.
Exactly.
Because we have housing slotted in there, and you have that cost that would then be able to create capacity for the space needs. There, I mean, there's all sorts of elements that.
Right.
You know, maybe the only thing we can do is revamp our, our sewer and water, and that's what we'll do if we have to do that, you know, if that's what we're allowed to do. But we don't know that yet.
That's right.
So that's what, you know, on Tuesday, we'll ask the board to give me time for the remainder.
I mean, the key is to be creative and make sure these resources are deployed into our community, period. Go ahead, Mr. Mieghel.
Uh, no, I, I guess, just with that new information, you know, my, my next question was going to be like, okay, well, how would that help the numbers that we're currently seeing if we were to do the four million? But considering that that's still even just such a gray area that we're not sure, I don't want to get my hopes up. So I will not ask that question, and I will wait.
We'll get there.
Okay, from a historical perspective, when did we take over Olympic View, Tamashan, and Boston Harbor? When did the county take those over because of people in those communities? And if you don't know, that's okay, but.
I'm trying to recall, yeah. Starting in the late eighties through the nineties, we took those over. And I don't, I can get back to you with the specific.
Well, the only reason I even bring that up is because I think it's a darn good argument to explain to the communities, if you're getting, getting any kind of resistance, that, hey, you guys had this system, it was all part of the original lots and homes out here. And something happened, it fell apart, and the county stepped in, but to keep it going, we've got to change rates.
Yeah.
But I think it's, you have to bring up the historic perspective.
So the county stepped in, not by choice.
Well, no, I know that, that's what I'm saying. Not by choice, and that makes it an easier pill to swallow, from my perspective.
And I think they're aware of that, and as Karen mentioned, I, you know, that, that.
Never hurts to push.
Nobody ever jumps up and down about a rate increase, but they were, you know, lukewarm to it. They, they do understand the need, they do understand the systems that we're trying to operate for them, and they understand the initiatives we're taking to try to get them to a better place.
How about Olympic View and Grand Mound? You never, you said you talked to the others, but you didn't say anything about talking. Now, Grand Mound, I don't, that's kind of our thing, we built.
Talked to each other.
Years ago, yeah. But on Olympic View, that's another one they have to say about this.
They don't have a utility advisory committee, nor, nor does Grand Mound.
Because it's small enough.
It's very small. It does, does have an interested individual from time to time, but it doesn't have a committee per se.
You can always build in, I know you know this, but you can always build in the argument that, you know, lot builds in three percent, autumn, that, like, I mean, we really haven't been hot last year because of the pandemic, whether to change that. But that is just a.
Right.
Built-in, no matter what, three percent, or, um, the rates are even different. But I mean, they're not being treated, you know, to, to propose three percent is treating them exactly the way everyone else in the county is being treated, so.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and we didn't do it last year, a lot did. And so, I mean, they're really doing better in that sense.
From, from my perspective, if we're going to send a letter out about the rate increases, I'd like to have the historical perspective in there.
Okay.
I think that sells a lot better.
So I guess that would be my recommendation for the board, to provide direction to continue with the public outreach at this point with the three percent increase.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to, I mean, I don't like rate increases, but I don't see any way around it if we're going to keep going, other than get some care's money in there and do some upgrades right now if they're eligible to postpone the M and O operation down the road.
But the takeaway is that, that even the rate increase covers M and O, and we still have a big hole with infrastructure. Maybe we can patch that with the relief.
That's what I'm hoping.
But we still have to cover M and O.
Oh, yeah, we're, oh, we got to make the rate increases. But I, to me, it's always been an aggravation, me and the county had to take over. I've been through some utility things where, watched some utilities go down, and then somebody else had to take them, it was a nightmare. And so it's irresponsible developers that usually end up doing it.
Even that, even at some, at some point, I explored the idea with the PUD to take over all the systems.
But they were too.
They just wanted.
They're, they're smarter than that.
No, and they went through, you know, they're for profit in a way, so it wasn't a, it wasn't the, uh.
Those PUD commissioners take home a lot of money, I don't know if you know that or not. It's like no pay, you know, meetings and all that. You take a look at what they take home, you'd be impressed.
Okay, so here's some thumbs up to continue with.
Yeah, and, and I'm not so sure that three percent is enough. I mean, I'm not usually in favor of rate increases, but when people run around shooting themselves in the foot, they got to pay a penalty for it.
Well, I think we have to remember that we do have a cost of service study that we're doing, which is why we only talked about for two thousand and twenty-two, so that we can get a better sense of what is it actually costing us? And then what does it look like? Are there efficiencies to be gained with, with consolidation?
Also, in, in, in last slide, if, if there's a way to, against some of the American Rescue Plan funding for infrastructure, what it does is going to be eliminated and need to transfer from one fund to another, in which builds an additional capacity.
Well, I'd much rather use American Rescue Funds than REIT money to do these upgrades if we can do it.
To Commissioner Mensah's point about, that may dig us out of the short-term hole, but we are still.
Well, sure.
Be looking at that long-term.
And I think the study is going to give us that.
Exactly.
The answer. But also, I believe the study includes the consolidation, right? So which is, is larger conversation.
Well, I'm just thinking about, to maintain ago or two years ago, you don't, you're not generally paying the exact same cost every year. Like, there's just costs, costs that are just increasing, there's just.
One year you need a water heater, and another year, no.
Well, I'm just, I was just making the point that like, a lot where the rate is designed to cover capital, then if you have this infusion of, you know, you go, oh, here's millions of dollars worth of money to do the infrastructure, you could conceivably not raise the rate, you know, or lower the rate for a period of time because you have this, but we're already in a hole. So an infusion of our money to cover infrastructure needs is just going to help us dig out of the hole. It's not going to create a situation where we can cut rates.
I think we ought to have a rate funding, or, you know, rate day fund, or whatever, you know.
We think about.
Can't cover that.
I mean, you, you put a new system in, just as we should be for, you then put replacement, you put replacement cost in, right? So you're building, building that reserve up, which is what we talked about, our reserve funds. So you put something new in, you may not have a lot of work that needs to be done on that in the first few years, but there will be costs that occur over time, and you build up a fund to then replace it, whatever that piece, component is, or.
Okay, we're about done?
We're done. Thank you, guys.
Karen, and Karen, could you and Jen stick around just for a minute?
We got. Let me, let me close this meeting.
Oh, okay.